So what has happened?
You have a sigh like.
Two minutes versus the start, and then I feel like I need to fill it.
So.
Yeah, it's already going to come along with. Things this.
Just about there. We should do a countdown like New Year's Day. Calling together to order the meeting of our city council for July 21st, 2025. Would you please rise and we're going to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to call the roll.
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Present.
Alderman Santiago.
Present.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallett. Alderman Carrito Munoz.
Here.
Alderman Demas.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Present.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek. Alderman Stout.
Here.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Present.
Alderman Murano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
That confirms that we have a quorum. We will proceed to our public participation. And I'd like to call first on Luis Handel.
Good evening. I just want to give you one point of information. We have a West Chicago Sister Cities group. I don't know how much you know about it. But in a week from Friday, 10 of us are leaving to go visit our sister city in Germany, healthcare in bills. So we'll send whatever greetings you'd like to send. And maybe you'd like to travel next time or be involved. We should be on schedule to host a group next year. On another note. I really hate bringing this up in a public forum and spending time on it, but I live near Wheaton Academy. And I don't have any problem with it being a school. I don't have any problem with cheering and yelling and football and all of it. But it's been a constant battle with some issues. I prefer to have a conversation with staff there, but I don't get my calls returned. My preference would be to meet with someone from the police department and someone from staff there to iron out some ongoing issues. When I saw their application for the special event, it kind of triggered some things that have really been bothering me. One is that. They filled out the application where it says, are there any problems? Have you had any complaints? From the public and they were no. And that's just not true. There have been ongoing complaints all the time. Their volume of their PA system is more than needs to be for a game. I don't have any problem with the going on. It was until 10:11 at night. It is so loud that it is woke me from sleep. So at one time I actually thought someone was in my house. And I was like, wow, you know, that's loud. I've talked to them about it. It's just ongoing over the years. And the other things are what I consider safety traffic type issues. They have a driveway that's a go south on Hawthorne Lane. It's a right turn only. I've seen two accidents myself there. The odds of that happening are pretty slim. That's us. How many times people are turning out carelessly left turn out of that? I don't understand why it just can't be reinforced by the school. This is something the school probably just needs to say to people. This is a reminder. And the other thing that's just really, really bad is the parking. They agreed in a public forum not to have any parking on the public streets during the day. They have lots of parking. They're supposed to be abiding by what they said would go on with their multiple, multiple phases of their plan. And they don't. They have 15 to 20 cars parked on that street every day. And most often blocking both hydrants. So they have been complained to. They have been ticketed. You know, we tried to be just informative about it. Send a letter to the parents. Send a letter to the kids. Nobody's trying to, you know, put those kids in jail. But last year it came to a head. I came home. Both sides of the street were parked on. Harley could get through. That's why there's no parking allowed on one side of the street ever, ever. I called the police department, just send somebody out here and make an announcement at the game or something. Please move your vehicle. They came out and they were like, I don't see the problem. So I was really irritated. I went around and I counted cars in my subdivision. And in the other subdivision adjacent, there were 350. Can't find my notes now. I think I throw them out. But there were 350 minimum cars parked in our subdivisions. There were 10 fire hydrants that were blocked, completely blocked. So I would have preferred to have this conversation in another forum, but because they're asking for this. I'm just letting you know, maybe you could put that part of the plan that there would be some conversation about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Heather Nazzalia.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Bobey, members of the city council and our new corporate council. My name's Heather Nazziaolic and I'm here tonight as a concerned resident of West Chicago. I'm here to talk about truth, accountability, and the right the public has to know about what happens inside City Hall. On or around October 17th, 2022, the previous city council voted unanimously to approve resolution. 22R0051, authorizing a settlement to resolve a sexual harassment discrimination. And retaliation EEOC complaint filed by a former city employee. Here's what we know. The city paid the former staff member over $70,000 plus back pay, vacation time and sick leave. The city's risk management provider at the time Irma covered the employee's attorney's fees. And beyond that, the city of West Chicago paid additional legal fees to then city attorney Patrick Bond, who built the city for his work connected to this matter. By the time it was all said and done, the situation cost taxpayers nearly and the city nearly $200,000. And yet to this day, the public has been told almost nothing about it. That entire settlement was handled behind closed doors in executive session. And there has been no transparency about who was involved, what the complaint alleged. Or whether any disciplinary action was taken. That vote was approved under former Ruben, Mayor Ruben Pineda and supported by several aldermen who are no longer seated along. With some who are still serving on this council today. Rebecca Stout, Jamie Sheehan, Joe Murano. Christopher Swiatek, who is not here, John Smith, Alton Hallett, who's not here, and Sandy Demas. Since then, I have gone through every proper channel. I've submitted FOIA requests. I've emailed aldermen and staff alike. I've asked respectfully for answers and each time I've either been absolutely ignored and no emails returned. Or I've been told by one alderman that this matter sealed in executive session and it can't be disclosed or talked about. But let's be clear, the case is over, the settlement has been paid, the legal legal matter is closed. There is no ongoing litigation and no legal reason that's valid to continue keeping those minutes sealed. So I have to ask why? Why are those minutes still hidden? Was the complaint filed against someone in leadership? If so, what action was taken? Were they disciplined or allowed to remain in their position? Why did the city switch risk management company shortly after the settlement and leave the previous contract early? Was that connected? And why won't anyone here answer these basic questions for me? And here's the most baffling part of it all. If the accused denied all wrongdoing, as I read in the information that was turned over to me. If they claimed it was false, then why exactly is the city protecting them by keeping this sealed? If there was no finding of guilt and no admission, then why not release the minute? The refusal to do so doesn't protect the city. It damages credibility. So tonight I'm asking you guys to vote to release the executive session minutes. Let the public see what happened. Let us know who was involved. Let us know what action was taken. And let us judge for ourselves whether this city handled it properly with integrity. Or just simply wanted it to go away and be swept under the rug without the public knowing.
Thank you. So, uh, Sujeira Teles.
Best care boss that you look for in money.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Apologize if some of you already heard my speech, which is about the same right now, but here it goes. My name is Sujeira Teles and I'm here with Rafael and Tom. We are here in behalf of Desperado Latino. We have presented a proposal for the Mexican Independence Day celebration this year. This event has taken place in past years under different organizers. And this will be our first year leading the celebration. We are very excited and fully committed to honoring this important tradition. While enhancing it with fresh energy, transparency and strong collaboration with the city. Jesus Patrias is more than a cultural event. It is a celebration of identity, inclusion and community pride. We aim to celebrate to create a vibrant, family-friendly experience. That highlights Latino heritage through music, dance, food and local vendors, all while bringing together residents from across West Chicago. We're respectfully requesting the city's support, both through funding and logistical coordination. To help us ensure the event is safe, well organized. And accessible to all. We're already building partnerships with local schools, artists and businesses, and we will work closely with city departments. To meet all requirements and ensure full transparency throughout the planning process. We thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to working together to bring this celebration to life for the entire West Chicago community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to be here if you have questions because it's per agenda. Sorry.
Gracias, again. Tim David.
Hi, my name is Tim and I'd like to first start off and really thank Alderman Murano. Everybody pronounced it correctly. So I went to Alderman Murano a couple of weeks ago after a city council meeting. And brought up an issue that's right by our house, right up Route 59. And man, did he take care of it. Very good communication. That's what we want as residents from city council. Just coming back and having the communication saying, we've got this because there's been almost some bad accidents at Route 59 and Julia Road. Because people are making an illegal left into that church parking lot. And it's been brought up. There's been a solution. It's eventually going to come up. Later on to get resolved the rest of the way, but there's been some that. Just the route of traffic on 59 with the curvature, people don't see it. And then all of a sudden you've got four cars backed up onto 59 because. Somebody decided to make an illegal left and they can't because the traffic's all backed up. So. Once again, thank you very much. I really appreciate you listening to on that. The other thing I wanted to discuss was, you know, we've been coming to the city council meetings. We didn't come to the first one. I had COVID. Didn't want to spread that around, even though I know that's a gift that keeps giving.
Thank you.
But, you know, we've been coming to all the city council meetings lately and, you know, I'm starting to see some changes. We're starting to see some positivity. The one thing that I wanted to bring up was last meeting, Alderman Davis decided to table a motion. And then questions were being asked and I know sometimes then it will go to discussion. And if it goes to a discussion, at that point, we need to have an intelligent conversation about why we decided to table it. Not just speak by like a church house and say, I don't know why. Because we've got other people in the gallery out here that want to know, why is this being tabled? Why? Why are the wheels coming to a grind? And it got me thinking, I'm like, you know, maybe, just maybe. That certain council members have their own personal agenda. Well, here's the thing. We're not able to get up and talk but three minutes. And you guys are elected to represent the people and especially in your ward. And if you take a look at like your word, Alderman Demas. Uh, Mayor Bovey ended up with 402 votes and Ruben had 254. And I'm not saying that's exactly the reasoning for you deciding to table it, but Ruben's gone. He's gone. He's not coming back. And you guys have to represent the people that voted and they voted for change. And the change that we wanted is we wanted the city administrator gone, which it was. We wanted the city attorney gone because that's what the people voted for. And from what I can tell, and I've only been a resident for 10 years. This last election, there were more people that voted in this last election than any other recent election. You guys can pull the figures just as well as I can, but. At the end of the day, that's what you guys are voted in for. And I will say the only thing you did a fantastic job with going through to make sure that we have an amazing law firm for a month. But it should have been for six. I mean, seriously, I, I, I'm not a lawyer. I have plenty in the family, but. When she got up and spoke, totally understood it. Thank you very much. We might need to get to a bell. Yeah.
We know the timing, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. David. And that concludes our public participation unless I missed anyone. Is there anyone that was intending to speak who got missed? I have a alguien que iba a hablar pero. No, este, no te. Okay. So that concludes our public participation. I will respond. In my mayor's comments at the end to some of the things that were said. So, thank you. Okay, that brings us to our city council meeting minutes of July 7th, 2025. So we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So. We got, we have to put it, we have to bring it first. So were you making a motion?
To no.
Oh, actually approving minutes. Do we, do we, do we need to have that draft first before we discuss it?
One of the problems here is that I believe the city council never really adopted like Robert's rules of order, but the normal procedure would be to make a motion a second, then have discussion.
Discussion, right? Yeah. Okay. So does someone want to make a motion? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, I noticed. Where we're talking about. S. Um, you've been on down further. Um, we're voting I. Um, Alderman Myers and you asked this mentioned as I and nay both.
Yeah.
And also I do recall Alderman Myers, even me. Not a night. I'm the same, the figure, but um. Ms. Carritham, yes, is under twice as A and N.
I am a. Alderman. What do you guess? Do you recall?
I believe I voted nay.
You voted nay. Okay.
Which.
We're about seven of my ears. I thought.
And Alderman Myers, can you confirm? Uh, what, what is the number?
So down where. Alderman Venus said, motion to table item seven F.
Yeah, I voted nay.
Yeah.
Need to.
So we did second it, but so you did second it, but then you voted nay. Yes.
That's what I noticed.
Okay. So with those amendments. That Alderman.
Too small, really nitty gritty changes.
Yep.
In item number six, corporate dispersment report, there's a missing comment between Alderman Birch Ferguson's name and Alderman Carrito Munoz's name. And in item nine A on the vote, my last name is misspelled about the tail.
Thank you. Your middle school teachers would be proud.
I real auto shock.
Can you please read for us the amendments? Um, it was Messina.
Unfortunately, that first one I missed what the item was that Carrito Munoz, Alderman Carrito Munoz was incorrectly listed.
It was the one that says Alderman humans made a motion to table item seven F. I'm listed as A and A. I voted nay on that one. Okay.
Three, four.
I see it now. Thank you very much. Okay, so for amendments, we have the correction of removing on seven F, removing Alderman Carrito Munoz from the voting. I as well as removing Alderman Myers from voting I and relocating both of them to or relocating Alderman Myers to voting nay. In addition, we have the editing of adding a comma under item six. With between Birch Ferguson and Carrito Munoz. And then we have the correction of Alderman BB's name under item nine. In the voting by voice vote. Given those adjustments. Are there any others?
Yes. Nine A.
Nine A?
Yeah, just like my name is based in the, 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 the Spanish, but it's not a. That ain't gonna deal.
Sorry, and I'm saying this to myself as much as everybody. Make sure your microphones are on. Mine got turned off.
A little. So you're looking at both and it's missing.
The T to the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Calvo Goli and the name is.
And we are adding a till day to your name. So that is accurately spelled.
All right. Well, with those amendments. We will. Do a voice vote on this one, all in favor of adopting the minutes. Uh, from July 7, 2025 with the amendments. That have been read. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. That brings us to number six, our corporate dispersment reports. We'll entertain a motion to. Yes.
I guess, your honor, I make a motion to approve the corporate dispersion report for July 21st, 2025. An amount of $372,175.51.
Is there a second? Alderman Myers, thank you. Excuse me, any discussion? Alderman Beebe.
This is a really minor point. The actual dispersment report in the packets is in the amount of 51 cents and it has 52 on the, on the minutes. I'm sorry, on the agenda. Yeah.
Down the yard.
So which, which one's correct?
Well, I, this was the one I read off of, so that was the one I.
Just checking.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, we are taking care of every set. Okay, so we are amending that to what, what, can you read the total, the final figure for us?
Yes, it's $372,175.51.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of. Wrong call. Thank you very much. We will call the roll.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Okay. That passes. That brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items which you would like to pull from the consent agenda? Alderman Myers.
Let's pull item G.
And G. Any others? Yes.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Uh, P, Q and R.
Q and R. Thank you, Alderman Murano.
Item A. And that's for consent.
Okay. Alderman Beebe.
Item N.
N?
Uh, item J.
J and K. You should say J.
J and I don't J and K.
Yeah, K has already been written, so. For those of you following along at home, the consent agenda is a mechanism by which we can bring a lot of different. Uh, items for a vote at once and they've already been spelled out or looked at in the, the packets. Any alderman is free to remove any of those from the consent agenda, which means that we will take it up individually after this vote. Okay. I believe that wraps up our removals. Development committee of. Yes, Alderman Stout.
Yes, your honor, none of mine were pulled. Item 7A, ordinance number 25O, zero, zero, two, five, and number seven. To allow keeping the chicken of chickens on single family residential properties. And item 7D, ordinance number 25O, zero, zero, two, six. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Chicago to create and permit the temporary use of temporary outside seasonal events. With that, I made the motion.
Alderman Birch Ferguson, second.
Is the motion to establish the consent to adopt the consent, just to establish the consent together with the removal of the items specified?
No.
Just.
Item seven A and B.
As said, Alderman.
This is what I read. Okay.
So we're taking it.
It was a first.
Committee by committee.
Here's why the motion be declared.
Yes. So would you state, state your motion one more time, please?
All right, uh, that's items seven A, ordinance number 25O, zero, zero, two, five, and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West. To allow the keeping of chickens on single family residential properties. And seven D, ordinance number 25O, zero, zero, two, six. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Chicago. To create and permit the temporary use of temporary outside seasonal events.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Items A and B pass. That brings us to infrastructure. Alderman Murano.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four items tonight. Item seven C, approve the purchase of three 2025 Ford F350 Super Cam. Four by four pickup truck for a cost nacho seat, $151,341 from Harry Ford. And authorize the city administrator contract with a third party to fulfill the necessary. Of hardwoods, nices, equipments and those three, for those three vehicles. Item 7D, approve the purchase and delivery of up to 2,080 tons of road salt at the price of $147,243.27 from Compass Minerals. America Inc. Under the DuPage County Road Salt Joy Purchasing Program for the 2025, 2026, and for season. Item 7B, resolution number 25R0044. Resolution operates the mayor to execute amendment number one for professional environmental services, civil and environmental consultants, Inc. For the West Washington Street Soil Removal Project and a mount that you've seen 130,000, a revised contract amount of $254,750. And finally, item. And finally, item seven F, resolution number twenty five R zero zero four seven, resolution authorized the mayor to execute a contract with civil tech engineering. For the preliminary design engineering services related to downtown revitalization project in a mount not to exceed two hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred forty one dollars and twenty three cents. And with that, I make a motion.
Is there a second? Alderman BB. Any?
Yes, can I can I actually just stop for a procedural moment here?
Yeah.
So when you have a consent agenda, what you're supposed to be doing is making a motion to establish the consent agenda first. So that motion would have to be made and seconded, and then there would have to be a unanimous vote to establish the consent agenda, which means you can take one vote on everything. So at first, you're talking about which items would we remove from the consent agenda. Okay, so now we know which items we're going to remove. We should then be first making a motion to establish the consent agenda like so. The last motion should have been a motion to establish a consent agenda to take one vote on item seven A and B. And then, once that motion passes unanimously, then we actually need the votes to approve. So it's a technical thing, but the procedure you're following isn't exactly correct.
Right.
So on yours, I think what you the motion you would be making is to to establish a consent agenda for those items, right? That would have to vote, we would have to establish the consent agenda unanimously.
Right.
And then, otherwise, maybe what the easier thing would would to do would be, everybody kind of talked about what they wanted to remove. So maybe we just need to go back and make the consent consent agenda to to adopt items A through S on the consent agenda, removing G, J, K. And P, Q, and R, vote on that, and then do these as individual motions to approve, right?
That's less cumbersome.
Yeah, I think that might be what you want to do.
Okay, so.
So you've we've already kind of voted to approve the two that you talked about.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
Yes, question.
Or actually a comment. The reason that we've always done it this way was for transparency for the the residents, the constituents. So that each one of the committee's chairs. Pretty much discusses all of the items and maybe goes into a little detail so that the residents know what we're approving.
I think that's a great idea.
I don't think that changes. If I'm understanding correctly, we're we're just essentially adding one vote at the beginning of our consent agenda. After we have pulled whatever we're gonna pull, where we establish the consent agenda, listing the items that have been removed. And then we do it essentially as we've done it before. Coming with by committee.
Oh, okay, so we had a discussion about what was going to be removed, but then we didn't really do the motion to establish it and remove them. We have to write into yours, and I was just unfamiliar with the procedure, which is why I was trying to clarify what you were making a motion to do, so.
So for clarity, should we go back and make a motion to establish our consent agenda minus? J. G, K.
G, J, K.
Yes, G, J, K, N, P, Q, R.
And at this point, I'd also remain because we wanted to adopt those.
Okay.
But next time, yeah, so I think it's fine this way. We just have to tighten up the procedure order.
We establish.
So can someone make that motion to establish the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, and just to repeat myself, clarify, we have a motion from Alderman Birch Ferguson to create a consent agenda. Minus A, B, G, J, K, N, P, Q, and R. Think I sunk my battlefield. Seconded by Alderman Demus. And then we will go back to our in. Infrastructure Committee, which we. Yes, point of order, Alderman BB.
Voice, voice vote or roll call?
And we have to.
The motion was made in second.
Yes, that can be voiced voiced by unanimous.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, crossing those Ts, not in those Is. Look at us. All right, back to Infrastructure Committee, I believe.
Okay, so at this point, am I okay to go through the item by item, or would you like me to make a motion to approve them prior to reading them up?
Yes, make make. Well, this would be a motion to approve items C through F, a second, and then discussion.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve item C, I'm sorry, seven C, seven D, seven E, and seven F.
Should we read them at that point? Does it matter?
No, she's saying that we have to get a second, and then we discuss.
To discuss.
She did it before.
Yeah.
Seconded by Alderman BB. Discussion. Would you like to read them for us, Alderman Murano?
I'm sure.
Then I'm fine if you skip C since you read it so nicely the first time.
I thought I read D enough pretty well. Yeah, no, I'll go through them again. So we've got item seven C, approve the purchase of three twenty twenty five Ford F three fifty super cab, four by four pickup trucks. Should say trucks, not truck. For the cost not to exceed one hundred fifty one thousand, three hundred forty one dollars from Harry Ford and authorize the city administrator to contract with a third party to install the necessary. Appertainences, equipment for these three vehicles. Item seven D, the approve the purchase of and delivery of up to two thousand eighty tons of road salt at the price of one hundred forty seven thousand, two hundred forty three dollars and twenty cents. From the Compass Materials, America Inc., under the DuPage County Road Salt Joint Purchasing Program for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six winter season. Item seven E, resolution number twenty five R zero zero four four, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one for professional environmental services. With the Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. For the West Washington Street Soil Removal Project in a mount not to exceed one hundred thirty thousand for a revised contract amount. Of two hundred fifty four thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. And finally, item seven F, resolution number twenty five R zero zero four seven. A resolution authorized the mayor to execute a contract with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc. For the preliminary design engineering services related to downtown revitalization project for Mount Notch to exceed two hundred nineteen thousand, three forty, three hundred forty one dollars and twenty three cents.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
All right, that brings us to our Public Affairs Committee and its new chairman, Alderman Smith.
Having got three items pulled, we have four items left, your honor. Seven H, approve county lawyer. We need to approve the consent of them before he reads them.
Uh, the consent has already been done in mass.
I got it.
Yeah, so this was my question is when he's making the motion, does he just read through them, or do we have to second it and then say discussion?
Yeah, you could do the motion either way, I suppose. If you want to do the motion and read the most approval, just read it at that point if it's already established.
Okay. Okay, seven H, West Chicago's fifth for fall five K run scheduled around September twenty, two thousand twenty five. Seven I, approve city's participation, and we go full scheme ahead public art installation, direct staff to budget for five thousand sponsored in two thousand twenty six. Ordinance twenty five zero O zero zero twenty seven, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Chicago chapter seventeen traffic. Article fifteen seventeen, schedules of designated streets, division four, yield intersections, section seventeen dash one eight one designated compliance required. And the last one, ordinance number twenty five O zero zero two A, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Chicago. After seventeen traffic, article seventeen, schedules of designated streets, division six, parking prohibited at all times, section seventeen dot one, one nine one E designated compliance required. And with that, I would make a motion.
Do we have a second? Alderman Avinia Soto, I saw. Let us call the roll, please.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Those motions pass. And that brings us to the items not sent to committee, which at this point would be O and S. Would someone like to? Make a motion for us to pass those. Alderman Demus, would you please?
Yes, your honor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty five O zero zero three zero. In ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Chicago, Illinois regarding specialty retailer class O liquor licenses on Port West Chicago. And seven S, concur with the mayor's appointment of Port Earhart, the Economic Development Commission for a term ending April twenty twenty eight.
We have a second. I saw Alderman BB. And let us call the roll, please.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Outstanding.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now we will. Take the individual items up. And we entertain a. Motion to take up these. Items. You want Alderman Myers?
Motion. Item G.
Item G. Is there a second? Alderman Demus. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, the the reason I pulled off was just in light of the the comments we heard today. So this is the motion to re-lead Academy's oncoming events. Scheduled on September twenty ninth through October fourth, and fireworks display scheduled on October second, eight point five. So as you mentioned, in their application, they said there's, there's been no problems in previous years. And so I was wondering if there was some way to ask for review, like staff or the the police department, should I have just come? Both are like, is this exactly, there's been no, no since the last.
Well, if I could volunteer, I would be happy to invite Chief Flurry to go with me to meet with. The administration of leading Academy and talk through any items that are of issue. I'd be happy to do that. Alderman Murano.
I'm guessing that this is a time sensitive item too, so if the idea was to go talk to them and then bring this back to my experience, because they. Put in fact, lose their bar. Yeah, I'm not looking to block it. I just want I want to kind of ask for a little bit more information for us.
Okay, any other discussion? Well, let's call the roll. Yes.
Your honor, we we need to make the motion to approve first, I believe, and then.
Uh, he just asked what's your motion?
I was just for.
Oh, you said for just discussion. Thank you.
I move to approve item G, lead Academy's homecoming event. It's scheduled on September twenty ninth through October fourth, twenty twenty five, fireworks display scheduled on October second, twenty twenty five.
Second, Alderman Demus, and I will just clarify that I will follow up with Chief Flurry, who I believe is here. And, yeah, all right, we're good. And we'd be happy to have that have that discussion and and follow up with our resident who. Miss Handel, who had had the concerns, so. Yeah, let's let's go ahead and call the roll.
All right, Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Demus. Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, and let me just extend an invitation also, Alderman Smith or Alderman Swatette, who are not here, that is in your word and. Would love to have you accompany as well if you're interested. Okay, well, we'd entertain another motion to look at point J.
Improve.
Yeah. To approve.
Removed the point A because I am co-founder of Desperata Latino, so I am recusing myself.
All right, motion?
I make a motion to approve Desperata Latino's Mexican Independence Day Festival twenty twenty five, scheduled on September fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
A second for Alderman Stout. Any discussion? Let's call the roll.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia. Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
So again, I removed the K for the same reason, I'm co-founder of Desperata Latino, so I recuse myself from this, but.
Okay, Alderman Demus.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item A, resolution number twenty five R zero zero five zero, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a funding agreement. With Desperata Latino to support the twenty twenty five Mexican Independence Day.
Is there a second? Any this, yes, and Alderman Murano.
Yeah, if if possible, if we could add it on to the resolution, I'm just the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand five hundred. Usually when we have the dollar amounts of rights, have it in the resolution.
Yes. That makes sense, and just a quick word of explanation for everyone. We're very excited to be having another Mexican Independence Day celebration kind of restarted this year. We talked about having a parade because I know I literally got hundreds of requests for that this year. And we spoke with the potential organizers who said, you know, it's a little too late to pull off a parade for this year. But Desperata Latino volunteered to put together a festival for this year, and there is the intent to try to. Build on that momentum and have a parade next year. So I'm very excited that that we're able to to bring this. The money, eight thousand dollars is the city's. Commitment, and then there's another eight thousand five hundred, is it? I thought it was eight thousand.
Eighty five hundred, I think, is our initial.
Eighty five hundred is initial, and then in another eight thousand, which has been committed as a matching fund. So that the organizers, if they're able to raise donations, then the city will match up to another eight thousand for a total of sixteen thousand five hundred. Any other discussion? Okay, well, let's. Call, well, can we have clarification on the amendment, Ms. Murano?
Yeah, so what I would just like to add on there is that just for an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand five hundred.
Okay. So we're voting on the motion. So we're voting on the motion with that amendment.
So Alderman. I Dimas made that motion. So would you amend your motion to approve that?
Yes, I make the motion to amend resolution number twenty-five R zero zero five zero to read. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a funding agreement with Desperata Latino to support the twenty twenty five Mexican Independence Day event. For an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, and second. Alderman Morano this time. All in favor? No, sorry, we're gonna call the roll. We're gonna call the roll.
Okay. Alderman Dimas.
Aye.
Alderman Morano. Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Careto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've undertaken a. Motion to approve and.
I think we'd like to make the motion to table item seven and ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero two four ordinance. Implementing a municipal grocery tax, retailers occupation tax and municipal grocery services occupation tax for the city of West Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, and. We're not going to have a discussion, but as. As the chair, Alderman Morano and I discussed this ahead of time, and would you mind just kind of for the sake of friends at home, just talking a little bit about why?
I think the idea with this, and you'll see it, and there's another ordinance that's kind of related to this as well with the grocery tax as well. There's another consideration with the quarter percent increase sales tax. I think that there's just, there's more information that we need to obtain. I think the better we can do making informed decisions. And then I think the other idea too is to continue to kind of build that up, information out to everyone else as we complete as well. So. Once we kind of have all that, make a better, more informed decision, I think then we'll be ready to vote on it. So.
And I'll just add to that my perspective. For us to improve right now, which would, something that would be essentially a tax increase. We would be saying, okay, we're going to increase taxes and then figure out later how we're going to spend it. And so I would like for us to look at it more in conjunction with our budget process so that if we determine to go either one of those routes, we can say. This is why we're doing it, and this is, this is how that money would be spent. And. You know, we can have those discussions later. But I, I, I think that I agree that, yes, Alderman.
I like that, that he chose that because I have many constituents. I have many constituents with concern and. I was going to ask if we could have. Some kind of meeting where we're explaining where. Giving the public what's going on and why, what the two options will do. And so that the, the community is informed also. Why we're going to, about to make a certain decision. Because it concerns them, concerns me as well.
Do. Do we need to say when we are tabling it until?
No, you can table it indefinitely if you want to, but the statute requires the council to take action prior to October first. So that's kind of the timeline.
So the intent with those that I've talked with is to make a decision on this in the first meeting in September. And that will allow us to get, we won't be fully through the budgeting process by any means, but. It allows us to get into it and have a little bit more of a sense of where we're, where we're going and. Alderman Alcantara Garcia's idea of having some sort of a public forum. I like that. I don't know that it's anything that we need to necessarily vote on. But I guess maybe I would, I would ask this draft effort if we wanted to have a public. Forum to discuss that. Well, obviously, if there was more than four of us, it would need to be an official.
You could post it as a special meeting.
As a special meeting. I suppose we could tag that on to. An existing council meeting, have, have it, you know, before, say, our second August meeting. Do we have anything else, committee things going on that day?
This, usually it's, the finance card are on the first Mondays of months.
The second ones is public affairs.
The second Monday is development.
So the, so that, so the third Monday, third Monday in August.
That's a city council meeting.
Right. Do we, that's what I'm asking. Is there a committee meeting on the third?
Yeah.
Public affairs.
That's public affairs. Okay. Suggestions?
Go along with them, I guess, committee.
What's that?
Which time?
Which is, which is, which?
March fourth.
It's a six to Eastern now.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's for the development committee meeting is from six o'clock. You can do it on the second Monday after the development committee meeting.
Do it seven.
Do it at seven.
I like that. How do you guys feel about that?
Yes.
So that's, what's the date on that?
Obviously.
So this is.
Feel of it.
Okay. So we wouldn't vote on this, but we would need to put out the.
You could put it as a special meeting.
Proper notifications and so forth. Yeah. So. I guess just informally. Can we do an informal thumbs up, thumbs down to see if everybody's in agreement with that concept?
That's fine.
Okay, give me a thumbs up if you like that. All right, thank you, guys.
Here.
We will do that. You, you guys should see how complicated this paper is getting. Yeah, it's like scoring a seventeen inning baseball game with some amendments. All right, so that we need to, did we vote on that on the tabling? Let's take a roll call. On. Table, on the motion, can you, can you repeat your motion, please?
There'll be a motion to table item seven.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Careto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Dimas.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That passes. Were to P, I believe. I would entertain a motion. To. Approve. Item G. We'll have discussion once we have it on the, yes, Alderman.
That can focus.
I'll come back, I've got to see, do you want to say your motion?
I. I motion to approve. In ordinance amending the code. Of ordinances of the city of Chicago regarding C for liquor license classification. Alcohol sales at gas stations.
Is there a second? Alderman Beebe. Discussion. Alderman Beebe.
I'd like to make a change to the ordinance as written. The ordinance as presented in the packet and is presented to us. Allows C for liquor licenses to provide alcoholic liquor, and it's our individual, our individual packaging. When this was originally passed. Our intent was to limit this to beer and wine, not spirits. In Q. We're about to define, sorry. The wrong one. No, in Q, we're about to define what a alcoholic liquor is, to include spirits. The ordinance is as written today and as presented to us would allow C for licenses to also serve. Spirits because they're alcoholic liquor. I believe we need to amend the ordinance as presented to limit it to beer and wine.
Can you?
Yeah.
Give us specific?
Well, we can, but maybe we should have a discussion.
Language.
That we can make an amendment.
Alderman Morano.
Yeah, so I think I get where you're coming from. Are you talking about number four within that? Where it mentions. Alcoholic liquor.
In the top of it, part two.
Part two also on the end.
On page, on page two, three. Under section C, class C. The first paragraph, the end of the first sentence.
It's alcoholic liquor there as well, yes. It actually mentions it.
It mentioned a couple times. That was, that was where I went, right?
So, yeah, so using the term alcoholic liquor.
As defined in the next ordinance would change what I believe is the nature of this ordinance when it was originally passed.
So should we do essentially a find and replace of alcoholic liquor and replace it with beer and wine?
I believe so.
Okay.
Looks like it's only those two places in section two.
Correct.
Well, yes, I agree with Alderman Beebe. I mean, the, the idea behind it, of course, is to restrict it to beer and wine. And certainly don't want to create any.
And the whole reason we're creating.
I didn't want to say that.
And the whole reason we're creating C six is to allow. Potentially allow the sale of spirits in the gas.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alderman Myers.
Yeah, so, so this particular. Ordinance, it is reducing the square footage from thirty-five hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet. Of, yeah, to me, sort of, I was wondering, what's the, the reason behind that?
Ms. Masino, would you like to?
So Kelly is prepared to give us.
I was gonna say, I feel like. Yes. Waiting on the weeks. Yes, thank you.
I was waiting to be. So the, the reason is really it's more of a script nurse error. So when we had originally presented the number of gas stations that met a certain square footage. What we didn't realize is that we were using square footages provided by the business owner. And unfortunately, then when they applied for a liquor license. We realized that the one that would have qualified under the then presented thirty-five hundred square feet was actually below that. And so this does not actually enable any additional or new businesses to be eligible, but really is intended to cover those that were originally anticipated to be included. With that original square footage designation.
Thank you. And while you're here, would you mind giving us just a brief overview of the ordinances related to liquor licenses?
Absolutely. So the next ordinance that is up for consideration is the inclusion of or the addition of a C six. License, which would only, which incorporates additional definitions and clarification on the terminology to be used. So thank you to Alderman Beebe. For pointing out the potential discrepancy with the C four license and the language there. But this provides the additional clarification and then also would be only applicable to the then. C four liquor license holder at the time that the C four classification was modified last year. And so this does allow for the continuation of the. Spirits as well as beer and wine for the, that one business, but. One thing that we did not catch, so thank you again to Alderman Beebe, is that there does also need to be an incorporation of no single serve spirits. So that was unfortunately omitted, so I would request that that be added in with your discussion. And then finally, the, the last. So we have, we have an additional C four license application. So should the council not want to pass the C six classification? Then we would ask for your consideration of adding an additional C four license. If the C six. Classification is acceptable and passes, then no further action would be required because it would basically be a transfer of a C. C four to the C six, thereby opening up a C four license where the new application applicant can then be issued that license.
So if we pass ordinance. P. Excuse me, if we pass. Ordinance Q. Then. Which one will go away?
Our.
And then Alderman Morano, like maybe you had a question for.
Yeah, but I, I feel like we should take these one at a time. So like if we could do P, and then I, I think we should really dive into Q though.
Yeah, that's fine. Just any other questions while she's up here, we can always call her back, but.
I'll be close.
Thank you very much. All right, so thank you. And back to the issue at hand, any other discussion? We've said a lot of things. Can we have the, can we have a, who made the original motion?
No, Alcantara Garcia.
Okay, Alderman Alcantara Garcia, you're gonna have a difficult task. Can you please restate that motion with the amendments? That have been. Proposed.
That was P, right? I motioned to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash oh dash zero zero three one. In ordinance amended the code of ordinance of West Chicago regarding C for liquor license specification. Alcohol sales, add gas, wine, beer, and wine.
So it has been.
Is that correct? That's the second.
Is there a second? Alderman Beebe. Any other discussion? Let's call the roll.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Careto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Dimas.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Upstate.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe that brings us to Q. Do we have a motion? If we have a motion and a second, then we can discuss it. Yes, Alderman Morano.
I'm trying to think everything. Yeah, I make motion to approve as seven Q ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero three two, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Chicago to define certain terms. It's liquor code and to create a new liquor license classification regulations addressing this, I'm sorry, the sale of packaged alcohol beverages at gas stations.
Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Smith. Discussion. Alderman Morano.
Well, yeah, and I apologize if I missed. I feel like I've read it a bunch of times, but I still don't see it in here. Where does it show? The regulations on, I mean, so the biggest change for the C six licenses is allowing liquor in, and this is a classification that will only. Work for one gas station in our entire city, correct?
Yes. Ms. Christie, would you like to come back up and give a little background on this as well?
But, so my, my question is. Where is it stated about the size of the liquor bottles in the ordinance?
Yeah, it's in, on the third page, number C. Two defines it as far as beer.
That's beer, yeah.
Three, wine, and then I believe we have an amendment that will be forthcoming regarding the.
Single serve.
No, no, single serve.
Well, but how do we define single serve? Because I guess, I think it should go beyond just like the little sure things. Well, but how do we define single serve? Because I guess, I, I think it should go beyond just like the little shooter things, I mean, like any of the small alcohol bottles. I think pose a risk um, to danger.
Um, so let, if you don't mind, let's have Ms. Christie just give us a little background on, on why we're looking at essentially. Continuing the grandfathering in here, and then we'll come back to that question on defining single serve.
So there was a business that had come to the city to make a, a large scale investment and uh, renovation of the, the gas station. Um, and as part of that approval, they were, they built their building such that it accommodated. A sort of special room for the sale of um, liquor as well as beer and wine. And so. That was part of their proposal and predicated that uh, investment on the. Uh, approval from the city for the sale of liquor, beer and wine for their location. And so they have come forward requesting this. Um, we did not, however, look at a limitation on the certain thighs. Um, but I understand the concern. Um, and so.
Yeah, so the, the whole spirit, for those that are new here, so we, we did change. Um, but some of the, the liquor licensing, and it, just similar to what you guys, we just went through just now, and we added a, a gas station to it, but. Um, the, the idea about it is to kind of remove that whole single serving alcohol at the gas station. Um, it's a very dangerous thing. Um, I think people just putting, you know, single serve beer in their cup holder, driving home with it, or. You know, those little shooter bottles or whatever, um, at a grab and go type place like a gas station could be a little dangerous. Um, so the, the idea behind it was to, to remove that. Um, I can. That was right, so the, the idea, my concern is, is what the, the heart of all is that. If, if we do allow these, you know, these handheld alcohol bottles here, um, that it's, it kind of takes away the spirit of the idea of the. C four licenses that we are doing.
Uh, Alderman Santiago.
I, I, I guess I'm trying to understand the difference of having that, the volume. Right, the, the, the small shooter or the single serve at a, at a gas station versus the existing liquor stores that we. That, that serve our, our city. Uh, uh, the same concept, right?
Yeah.
They have the single serve, they have the, the shooter bottles, so the environment is the same.
Um, I think limiting is a good idea. I, I think that we've got a lot of gas stations, and if, if we allow access just because someone's pulling over for gas, that they can just. I don't think they're going to a liquor store to grab gas, right?
Right, but I guess my question is, I was trying to understand the specific. Establishment that requested this particular permit, right? So it's one particular location that wants this, so it's not every single gas station that has this ability.
Correct.
Clarify one thing. Um, uh, cause I met with, I met with the, 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 the owners in conjunction with Ms. Christie and. Ms. Messino, and I will just say that the owners volunteered. To not sell single serve. So it was not, it's not a, it's not a make or break thing for them. Um, and there was kind of that discussion, I, because one of the questions I asked. I think what's gonna come up is uh, the question, you know, will this lead to more uh, drunk, potential drunk driving? And um. I will just tell you what their response was, and obviously they had, you know, uh, they had a, a horse in the race. But uh, you know, that their studies had shown that, you know, people who were coming to a gas station and buying. Liquor were not typically, were not, you know, statistically higher uh, driving drunk when it's, when it's. You know, larger packages of liquor, but they, they said, you know, the single serve. We understand limiting that, i- it's just kind of making it less of just a, uh, what's the word for? When you go to Home Depot and they have all that stuff that, that is at the counter and you're like, oh, I can grab one of those, just, you know. Um, there's a word for that. Impulse, impulse buying of liquor for people that are driving. So I, I don't, I. I, I'll just say that they are not fighting that. They're not, um, they're not disagreeing with it. Um, and I'm happy, if, if we need to discuss it, that's fine, but I was gonna suggest that maybe we ask. Um, our attorney, if she has any suggestions on uh, how to limit. Uh, or define single serve, if it's.
Yes, so we already have two limitations in here, one is on beer and one is on wine. So they start, those are contained in two and three. What I would do is I would add a number four. Alcoholic liquor other than beer and wine shall not be sold in containers less than, and then we should just specify what the. Volume would be on a single serve. And then we would replace number four with five. So we would just add a, a four that said that in there, but I don't know what the, what it would be.
Yep. Yes, Alderman Myers.
I, I have objection to this, not on a like size of or volume thing, but more on like a competition thing. Um, I don't think we should be carving out a specific gas station and say, this one is allowed to sell and nobody else is. Um, I don't like the idea that our code from now on will have like one card out that says, if you got your license before this date. Then you're fine, and it's only gonna be one of these forever in West Chicago. Um, it sounds like, you know. The previous council did go through a lot of discussion about this topic. Uh, and it sounds like the conclusion was. We don't want spirits in gas stations.
So, so uh, I would, I would respond by saying a little percent of this. Um, or the motivation behind this is not to increase access to alcohol sales. Um, but uh, was an issue of basic fairness. Because based on an approval that we gave them, they spent several hundred thousand dollars. And then for us to go back and say. Um, okay, nope, now we're taking that away. Uh, s- I, uh, is unfair. I recognize that we can do it. Liquor licenses are only a year at a time. We can pull all of them. You know, i- if, if we want to next year, but uh, i- and, you know. I don't even drink, but I thought just as a matter of basic fairness. Yeah, that just doesn't seem right for us to do that to a business owner. Alderman Myers.
I'll, I'll say it's also unfair to their competitors that one gas station gets to do this and nobody else does. Um, how much of that renovation was really for carrying liquor and how much was it for carrying spirits? I would expect that carrying liquor was actually, you know, refrigeration and stuff like that for that spirit, you don't need extra refrigeration for it. And I'll, I'll one more thing, which is, why aren't they here? Leaving their cakes. Desperatario Latino is here, asking for money for Mexican Independence Day festival. But they're not here, and you're fighting for them, and Kelly's fighting for them, like, I don't, I don't see why they're not here answering our questions.
Uh. Yep, uh, who wants to go next? Alderman Dimas?
I, I would just make, maybe, um, I don't know, I think, I don't, make a motion that maybe this go back to the liquor commission. So that they can come and represent themselves to the liquor commission. And then the liquor commission can have that discussion and anybody else can come to that as well. That would be what I would recommend at this point.
I've got no problems with that. Alderman Marano?
Yeah, I would agree, it just, as it goes back to liquor commission, there, I, I quite honestly, there's another issue I have with this beyond the liquor portion. Yeah. We not establishing what, you know, single serve is. Um, it also states that beer in containers less than sixteen ounces should not be sold in anything. To, in any person in quantities in less than six cans or bottles. Um, so that is, leads me to believe that if it's over sixteen ounces, it could be single serve. As that's written. I think that that's a terrible idea.
Then, then would be single serve.
So, so if it's twenty two ounces, if it's sixteen ounces, if it's forty ounces, it can all be single serve.
Says sale of the neutral well in Kansas.
I guess I'd be making your bottle as a single serving.
But it, well, the, the way it's written is that if, if it basically if it's twelve ounces or less, then it has to be in six pounds. If it's sixteen ounces or more, it doesn't.
I, I think that that language could be clarified, and I, I, I'm, I'm fine with um. Sending it back to um, the liquor commission, that it's. That's fine, I, yeah, I'm, I, this is ironic here, but I, you know, I, I just. I don't want to see us do something unfair. I get the, I get the competition thing, Matt, but. I, Alderman Myers, I apologize. Uh, uh, but um. You know, part of it, also, part of the reason why we, I mean, they were grandfathered in previously. And then part of the reason why we pulled their grandfathering in was because the owner of our local liquor stores came and said. I don't want competition from, from, from gas stations, and so. It, it's sort of, you know, we kind of gotta, gotta pick which one we, pick which one we do, but I, I'm fine with having that. Discussion and um, with, with the, with the liquor commission. Yes.
Point of clarification, the reason why their liquor license was changed wasn't because of someone from a liquor store came here. The reason why it was changed is because we were allowing um, gas stations to start serving beer and wine. And we wanted it uniform across, all across the board, and we thought that nice limit to set on that was set up beer and wine. And not to exceed the liquor.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Uh, my, my impression was that the, uh, when it first came to um. Uh, you know what? This is not even important. If we're all good with moving it to um. Uh, to the liquor commission, let's, let's do that, and then we can kind of sort that all out, rather than getting into the weeds of it here. Give her that? Okay, so we need a. Renewed motion to send it to, yes, Alderman Stout.
Change the, or I don't know, somebody else, I need the motion, but I would like to make that motion. To move this to a discussion for further clarification and discussion.
Second, Alderman Dimas. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Which brings us to. R. Okay, so um, we do need to. At least look at taking up R since we are not at this point uh, creating. Another C four license by vacating one, so Alderman Myers.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero three, and ordinance, meaning the code or of ordinances of the state of Chicago. To increase the number of class C four by liquor licenses, Speedway LLC, DBA Speedway number thirty nine ninety four.
Is there a second? Yes, Alderman Sheen. A discussion. Alderman Dimas.
Uh, yes, I was just um, wondering if, if we increase it here, which I'm okay with. Uh, but once we figure out the language or whatever we need to for Q, can we then decrease it back? Is all I want to know. That would.
Yes, because otherwise you have an outstanding license that you would then have to worry if someone came in and requested that.
I just want to make sure, it, could we have that in the language here with this ordinance then, or would that be just something we would come back with at a later date?
I think it'd be better to come back with it as a later date, because this isn't saying specifically who's being issued to.
Probably at the point that we take this.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Okay, let's call a roll.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Careto Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Dimas.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
No.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Upstairs.
Alderman Marano.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Brings us. Committee reports, thank you. I think so, yeah. Reports by committee.
My ass, committee has nothing at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Alderman Smith.
Nothing.
Okay. Moving right along. Uh, unfinished business and um. These items will. Remain tabled if we don't take them up. Um, but uh, I would. Thank you, yes, that, that. Okay, do you all hear that? So, yes, thank you for the clarification. Uh, item A, I am actually going to uh, recuse myself from. And so I am going to ask Alderman Marano if you would please uh. Yes, and, and I, I believe Alderman Marano that Ms. Messina could explain why this is coming up, but I. Will recuse myself and ask Alderman Marano to take this one. Okay.
Would you like me to?
Yeah.
Provide some context?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At our previous city council meeting, we had selected uh, attorney Ross Sackler. To assist as special counsel to represent the city of West Chicago. Related to the city of West Chicago v. Daniel Bovee and Jovi, Jody Bovee litigation. However, upon reaching out to Mr. Sackler to uh, get an engagement letter and to set up a meeting time. We were informed that he is no longer available to serve in that function. So on that list, there was another attorney that had been recommended, David Freeman. And David has confirmed as of just a few hours ago that he is available. As well as able to come to the August fourth city council meeting for an executive session. To meet with the council and get a better understanding of this case. So at this time, we'd be looking to see if he'd be willing to do a motion to select David Freeman. And the firm that he's associated with as special counsel to represent the city of West Chicago. Related to city of West Chicago v. Daniel Bovee and Jody Bovee litigation.
Um, so uh, I'll, I'll guess I'll just start firing away. Um, is it possible to have him come? And sit to same thing, same schedule, same time, date, everything, executive session, while, but prior to retaining?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions, Alderman Dimas?
Yeah, I was just um, curious about um, hopefully interviewing whoever would we retain for this. Um, because we really don't know much about any of these guys that we've been presented, so I would just really like to interview.
I agree.
Did we, there, did we interview our first choice?
Well, we, we actually had three choices at that time, not, not, now, now we don't.
Oh, okay, so I, I guess even if we had ten choices, what would? Would we want to go through the interview process for that? I mean, there's, again, coming back to the, the same thing.
Good, Alderman Dimas.
Yeah, I just, I feel it was maybe a misstep. Uh, I, I guess I'm kind of grateful that they declined. Because I think that's a misstep for us as a council not to have an understanding of the council we're gonna retain. So I just, that's my understanding.
And I believe that kind of answered my question, like if we only had one option this time.
I, I just, I just, I spoke with our lawyer. Um, and, and I had asked her if maybe she could add a few more names even, if, if it came out, so.
Okay.
And she said that she did.
So then is the thought that what you would do in our sport is actually have a couple firms to interview?
Yes.
So since one, or has one has indicated they're unavailable, do you want me to just give you another name then, and?
I think that would be helpful.
Okay, so what I had done before is I had called some firms just to make sure they didn't have a conflict ahead of time, and several told me they did have conflicts. Cause they were doing special work for the city, so I will, I'll come up with another name to add to the list and then. Just now make sure that it's in a firm with municipal experience, and then we can just schedule them for the, so. What, you have your regular council meeting?
On August fourth.
So would you want to, do you have a meeting ahead of the council meeting?
That would be the finance committee meeting.
And do those usually last an hour?
No. No, it depends what's on the agenda.
I mean, like if we told the firms to come at six thirty to interview them prior to the council meeting. Five thirty prior to.
I think if it was done in executive session, it'd probably go quick.
Yeah, it would it could be in closed session. But so would it work at like five thirty for the finance committee meeting or six thirty because you think it's going to be a short finance committee meeting?
Alderman Demus.
I have no idea what's on the agenda for finance committee meeting yet or August fourth, so I couldn't say.
I think ideally we could do it for six thirty.
Yeah.
Prior.
I have another.
Yes.
Another comment. Do you have a set of questions that you're going to be asking firms that are related to make a decision one way or the other? And I I guess knowing what you're looking to get from them. I mean, lawyer terms way out of my league. So what is it that you're going to be looking to get from one firm, Dave?
Are you asking me?
I I'm asking in general, I guess, in general, just to the council. This is something that we're going to be interviewing a law firm and asking them questions. I don't know what kind of questions.
Yes, we've had the opportunity a couple of times to interview, whether it's to be a law firm or other people that that we've we've brought in some some other appointees, things like that. So, yeah, I mean, certainly it's always good to get to know who you're going to be working with. There could be a couple of key questions that you ask them, figuring out some of their background, some of their thoughts on some of their current situation, making sure that it aligns with what the city council feels currently.
Okay, so the background based on the the list of people that we were given, three three firms last meeting, right? They gave us their website. Their information is on there. Did anybody go look at their information?
We did. That's why we picked the one we did. You were here.
I I know I was here, and that's what I'm saying. So we went and.
And now we don't have that one anymore.
Right, we went ahead and picked somebody right off the bat, right? Based on the information you got on the website, what's different now is really what I'm trying to get at from the council. What's different now?
The ocean, I feel like the ocean went from three to one, and we don't have the information about this lawyer. And we would like to have this information too.
So I'd like.
Alderman Mars. Yeah, I guess I'd like to kind of test, like, just as not everybody's speaking. So can I make a motion to accept David Freeman as the special counsel for the greenhouse litigation?
Absolutely. Motion. Hang on a second. Alderman Santiago. Call roll.
All right, Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
No.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
No.
Alderman Carreto Munoz.
No.
Alderman Demus.
No.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
No.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Marano.
No.
Alright, so I think we've got our direction at this point.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
So what you might want to do is ask the firms to submit a proposal letter to you, like, which would explain their experience, their rates, what's their experience with municipal litigation? And we kind of get things all the time. Like, I can actually ask, I can submit to Ms. Messino, like, something, please describe your experience handling municipal litigation, word conflict, your rates, your experience, that way going into the meeting, you have some background information on them.
Yeah. Okay, so can that be our direction then? And then the plan would be to have a meet six thirty prior to August fourth meeting?
That can be, sure. My only other suggestion is I I don't know if all of you feel the need to interview someone or if you would be comfortable delegating a committee to maybe even interview people by Zoom to bring a recommendation to talk about at at six thirty at that meeting, that might pare it down a little bit. If there's a subset of you that want to streamline it, I don't know yet how like if everybody wants to be involved in that, but it might make it easier if there's like four people that want to Zoom interview people or.
It'll look like scheduling. Said, you know, after every has to hit exactly the same time.
Anyone interested in being part of the interview? You have one more, right? You said four would be the number?
I think I think that will be fine. Well, three would be fine, too. And then they can come back with a recommendation and then they can coordinate their schedules with Ms. Messino, who can then talk to the law firms. Because otherwise, if one of the law firms isn't available on the fourth or something, this might just be easier.
Okay. Well, yeah, if we could do also, we've got Alderman Demus, Alderman Alcantara Garcia, Alderman Beebe, and Alderman Stout.
Okay.
All right.
You're supposed to come back.
Okay. Ah, which brings us to B. That's the one. That's the one that I was meaning to say if we leave it on the table, say.
Yes.
Mr. Alderman Marano.
That's right. Okay, yeah, I would prefer, quite honestly, B M C.
Okay, let's take one at a time.
Okay.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I would like to make motion to.
Or actually, we we don't, we don't need to make a motion. We should leave it on the table. My bad. So I guess I'll I'll just give a space if someone is wanting to take it off. Then you can make that motion on B. And then I'll go to C. Does anyone wanting to motion to take that off the table? Okay. And then I'm.
I believe.
Yes, I agree.
I am motioning to take the table seat.
To keep to keep the table.
To keep it.
Okay, it's already tabled, so we don't we just leave it alone if it's. Yeah. Okay. I think we're leaving that. Uh, D. Alderman Demus.
Make a motion to approve. Resolution number twenty five R zero zero four nine, a resolution approving a certain employment agreement with Colin Flory, chief of police.
I will take the second from Alderman Beebe was the first one that I saw, but maybe that's because he's closest to me. Okay, so let's read the roll. Oh, and and the discussion, sorry, discussion. Alderman Marano.
Yeah, obviously a big fan of making sure that this gets approved today. I I think it's it's a shame that we are moving to a two-year contract with our chief of police. I just think going forward, hopefully, we can make decisions that are more long term, at the very least, four-year terms. Set a good precedent for future candidates and and quite honestly, rewarding those that are doing great in our city with the full contracts in the future.
Okay. Call the roll.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carreto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Marano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. E. Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Um, I would like to motion to approve resolution number twenty five dash R dash zero zero five one. A resolution approving a a certain employment agreement with the embassy notes interim city.
Sir, a second. Alderman Myers, so they hand. Any discussion? Let's call the roll.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carreto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Marano.
Aye.
Can we give her a five?
Motion carries. New business, ten. I have asked to appoint Alderman Avinia Soto as temporary chair for the August fourth meeting, city council meeting. I will be on vacation, my family's summer vacation. And I I I, Ms. Craft, could you just explain the why we went with to the temporary chair as opposed to in the past, the city has usually done the mayor pro town?
Yes, so under the Illinois municipal code, you can select a mayor pro town if you have an incapacitated mayor unable to perform the duties of office. But if we have a mayor that's actually able to perform his duties but just missing a meeting, then you would appoint a temporary chair to run the meeting.
Alderman Marano.
We'd actually used a deputy mayor would usually be in place when our mayor was out, out of mayor pro town. Is that something that we weren't supposed to be doing either?
Well, if you don't have that created, I looked at your code and I looked at the municipal code and you don't really have that. It was probably an honorary designation or something. But the the technically precise title is temporary chair.
Temporary chair.
Who we could say the temporary chair who we will refer to as the deputy mayor.
Temporary chair who will refer to as his or her honor. Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Demus. Call the roll.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Carreto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Do I get to vote on this?
You can abstain.
Not saying.
Alderman Marano. All right.
I'm glad you didn't vote nay. Okay. Correspondence and announcements, Alderman Marano.
Uh, yeah, I I didn't want to steal your glory. I knew the taco and our best, I'm sure you're going to mention that, but we do have the DuPage airports back to school events that we do every year. It's really cool. And it's really neat from a lot of other back to school events that happen like with touch a truck, things like this. At the airport, kids can go hang out in private jets, helicopters. There's a bunch of giveaways for kids. There's lunch that's served. It's a really good time. So I recommend if you can make it, please go. My kids have been going the last three years. They love it. So if you can be there August second, I'm sorry, August seventh, from ten to two at the DuPage.
Yes, it is a good time. July twenty sixth, now I have no thunder, but. No, July twenty sixth is our our food truck in, I'm sorry, is our taco, what we calling it? Artco and art fest. And that will be, what are our times on that?
Reed Kepler. Three to seven hosted.
Yes. Three to seven, three to seven at Reed Kepler. So another good thing. We've also got, well, I guess this can be, what's that? For next time, we also have our national night out, which is August. Thank you. Remind me to have a calendar in front of me next time. And then we have finance committee meeting August fourth, infrastructure August seventh, public affairs committee August eighteenth. And then we will be looking to add our discussion of the our discussion of the tax, the potential tax increases to our did we say our public affairs meeting? Now I'm confused. August eleventh, which is.
Before the development.
Before development.
Or after the development.
After the development committee at seven o'clock. Thank you, group effort. Mayor's comments. So look at us, we're getting all kinds of stuff done. Good job, everybody. I wanted to just thank for the those that commented in our public comment section. And yes, the sister cities. My family is hoping to go next time. But I would encourage all of you to talk to, well, Luis, who is here. Dave Sabathia is the current chair. But we have Sister City, which is, I'm going to say the name wrong, but Turk Pousley? No. I mean, that's enough. Tal Kirchen, yes, that. And I I hope I hope that this video is not being sent to our sister city mayor with me slaughtering their name, but we are excited that we do have a group going, ten people, I think, currently. And and next summer, we'll be entertaining them here in West Chicago. We kind of talked a little bit about the law thing. I'll I'll kind of facilitate a meeting to talk about some of those those issues. And you can, anybody else who's concerned about it, feel free to put them in touch with Alderman Smith or I. And Chief Flory and I'll have that conversation. I yeah, we'll report back on that. That isn't, let's see, Nazoliek. Thank you for your questions. And I will be talking with our corporate counsel about the our ability or responsibility, either one to release the document that you referred to. That's a kind of a open discussion that we have started but have not had time to complete. And I just want to say that I appreciate having a local paper in West Chicago. We went a while without one. And I think that having a free independent press is really important. And transparency, honesty, openness is 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 something that we want to prioritize. I am planning on this is something we'll probably talk about in August, but I would like to I would like to initiate three special commissions that would be temporary, not permanent ones. One that would be focused on downtown revitalization. One that would be focused on transparency and community involvement and communication. And one that would be focused on the city hall experience and just trying to make things more customer friendly to those that walk in the door here. Ms. Terez, thank you for being here and and to all the the people from Despertar Latino, we're really looking forward to that celebration on September fourteenth. I think that's the day, correct? September sixteenth is obviously the, I mentioned Independence Day, but the fourteenth is the Sunday just previous to that.
Because we're all working in the sixteenth.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a good day for getting everybody together. And and then I just wanted to say a couple of things on the infrastructure point E, the environmental services, the hundred and thirty thousand dollars for revised contract. That is, that's connected to the Washington Street project, and I just wanted. That is, that's connected to the Washington Street project and I just wanted to make sure you all heard that. So as they're going, they're testing and and so they are increasing the amount that they are excavating based on those test results. Not totally surprising, but that is I'm really excited we're getting that done. The last of the radioactive pipes were removed about 10 weeks ago, 12 weeks ago-ish. And the 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 just finalizing the excavation of that property is something that I think we can really celebrate, hopefully, December 15th, my contract is when it's supposed to be done. And that 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 property is is where I am excited about focusing some of our efforts on revitalization. I want to talk about having a a public plaza in that area and want to have discussions with 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 all of you about some ideas kind of centering centering around this public plaza idea as as sort of a a focus of our redevelopment efforts. But it's, there's a lot, there's a lot on the the revitalization stuff. And then finally, one other note, just on point F. The the Resolution X due to contract with Civil Tech Engineering, Preliminary Design Engineering Services related to the downtown revitalization project and the amount not to exceed $219,000. So you'll note that that is $219,000 for preliminary design. It's a lot of money. We have a $2 million grant that we have obtained. And I believe Mahul said that the thought is that the city would also be contributing $4 million to that as well. So those are things that we're going to have conversations about very soon. But what my priority with that, I requested a meeting with the design team, but I want to make sure that we really do a good job of getting public input so that when all of a sudden said and done, what it what we do really reflects what our what our community wants. So staff is working on a plan to 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 not just get periphery input from the community, but to really work proactively to find out what what you want from our from our downtown. And I'm looking forward to those discussions. That's one of the things I'm most excited to kind of get get my hands dirty and get into is is that that project. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you again for all of you for being here for another scintillating 1 hour and 50 minute city council meeting. And I believe that just leaves an adjournment, we have a motion, Alderman Stout. Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We pose. Thank you very much. Yes.
Last line of papers?
That's going to be great on the on the on the.
It took me a lot of time.
I I just realized. I just realized that that was.